This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
All right, at this time I'm going to open the February 5th Town of Southampton Planning Board meeting and welcome the members of Charter Spectrum in the listening audience. And we have a quorum present tonight, Dan LaValle, Mark Darnold, myself, Paul DeMond. Paul Fergal may join us at some point. And the first order of business tonight is I just would like to let the board know and make it, read it into the record that I received a letter of resignation by Stephen Johnson to step back from the board and with regrets. And I'd like to thank Stephen for the time that he spent with us and I wish him well because I know he's on a lot of other committees in town. The first agenda item I have here is a Chapter 61 withdrawal request by Jeffrey and Carolyn Florrick, 3.19 acres at 158 former roadmap 27 lot 3. And I received a packet for the members, I just gave you a couple of sheets on it. I didn't send you the whole packet. And I'm glad Richard's here tonight too, just to maybe clear up some questions. But the main question was, is there's not a bill of sale with this, but an appraisal? And typically when we're dealing with these, we're dealing with a purchase and sale agreement as part of the application process. That being the case, there is an appraisal, it's quite in depth. And I did read in the, one of the paragraphs of the Mass General Law chapter, that absent purchase and sale, an appraisal is necessary and also the town, meaning the select board in the end, could require an independent appraisal as well?
The town would do an appraisal.
On top of this particular one?
As I read the statute, the applicant, the owner doesn't have to do an appraisal. They just give notice of withdrawal. If the town wants to exercise their right to acquire it, they do an appraisal. And then they had to buy it for the appraised value. If the owner doesn't agree with that appraisal, they can do their appraisal done. And then eventually could have three appraisals, but yeah. But process basically is they submit their request for withdrawal. If the town wants to exercise their right, then they would need to have appraisal done.
Jeff Florrick is here. And Jeff, just give us a little bit of information. Is it 3.19? I'm confused on one of these maps. On the application it says 3.19 and there's one here that says 1.62 or something?
Well, all together.
Oh, they're combined?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's counted both.
All right. So, and again, I couldn't find it here unless I probably dig through some of the fine print. But on the entire site, there's how many acres?
Um, 30 plus.
30 plus? All right. So that's what I didn't have, but you, for your information, similar to last meeting when we had the one over off of Peak Lot Road or in that area where there was several acres being, that were existing, but yet only four, I think, or five were taken out for building lots. So there's only 3.9 being with, 3.19 being withdrawn on this. Any questions from any of the board members? Once again, if there's, it looks like it's a building lot eventually, right?
Yeah.
Yep, per residential?
Both, both lots have been purged.
Okay. What do you think from you, Mark?
Um, on my, recently we had a form A where Chapter 61 was put out and we had to, the board formally reject a request for, I mean, first refusal. Is that included with this?
What was that again?
Uh, if someone's telling that I, Chapter 61 parcel, the town has right of first refusal.
I don't see that. You're not following me.
Um, and this is, this is removing pizza property from 61A, is that correct?
61, yeah. 61B, uh...
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, 61. Not A or B, it's just 61.
And so the town has a right to indicate if they want to buy it or not. And their right to buy it or supersede anybody else's.
I see Cindy's here from the assessors. Anything you would like to comment at all?
The tape, right? Tonight, hi, Cindy Palmer, 71 Glendale. Actually, the Board of Assessors hasn't yet reviewed and given an opinion on this. However, I stepped in here to hear how you guys are going to deliberate on this and see what your thoughts are. I will say one thing, we did vote, nope, that was the other property. I apologize, excuse me, that was the other one from last week that you looked at. So I don't have anything else to add.
Well, given that there's 30 plus remaining and we're not talking a big parcel here, I have no objections to waiving our right.
I have no objection.
No objections.
Right here, can I have a motion then from one of my constituents here?
Oh, right. I would like to make a motion to, to...
Wave?
Wave, thank you, that's the right word. Our right of first refusal for the property on former road from Chapter 61.
It's 158 former, map 27 lot 3.
There it is, 158 former road. Thank you, thank you.
Motion made by Dan, do we have a second?
I second.
Mark, second. Any other further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 So this will, I'll send our motion along to the corresponding boards that also have to deal with this and process will keep on going until it ends up at the select board, I assume, correct?
Yes, that would be the way.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. Next, we have Kyle Pinnell is here with us for some DLTA grant work that was awarded to us by PVPC on water supply protection zoning revision. And he's here tonight to show us the draft and we go forward from there.
Good evening, board members. I do have prints of the memo and amendment.
Well, thank you very much.
Is that different from the one you sent?
They're just broken up a little quicker.
Yep.
Is it the same as you emailed out?
Yeah.
So I'm joining you tonight to offer a final memo on the work conducted by Pioneer Valley Planning Commission as part of our district local technical assistance project from calendar year 2024, where we reviewed the Town of Southampton's existing water supply protection overlay district bylaw. So we're going to go through the work that was completed primarily as Task 1, which was focusing on the bylaw itself. There is a secondary memo that was distributed to members of the board and is included in the packet that I just handed out. That relates to the secondary task of the project and we can get into that as well. That related to public engagement with neighboring communities concerning the shared aquifer So the task work that was completed through the project, there was a thorough review and comparison of the existing provisions of the water supply protection district, that's zoning bylaw section 7.2, comparing the existing bylaw to the Mass DEP model bylaw on groundwater PVPC staff held periodic meetings with Mr. Richard Harris, our planning consultant with the town, on updates to the work and just to clarify questions and gain guidance. There is a memo and draft recommendations that I presented at the October 2nd Planning Board meeting, where we had a thorough discussion on a few of the provisions. We did complete an update of the Southampton zoning map, which was sent to the Planning Board Chair electronically. We also, following October meeting, drafted a revised use table where we tried to insert permitted uses within the district into the existing table of use by adding a new column. We completed the red line version, drafting the water supply protection district bylaw. And then we've also provided an amended bylaw that's at the back of the memo, so it's, it just reads cleanly without all the edits and reforming. So before I get into details of the work, I would just like to offer a thank you to the members of the planning board for your assistance, collaboration, guidance on some of these topics. And also thank you, Mr. Harris, for your time and contributions. So if we want to look at the existing bylaw that's provided in red line edits, it's a little hard to follow, but you'll see what has been added and what remains of the original. italicized text comes directly, either directly from the model bylaw or is revised language upon consultation or just to provide clarity. A bulk of the work relates to combining existing sections of the bylaw that relate to prohibited and restricted uses. So following feedback from the board in October, we decided to closely align with the model bylaw, create one single subsection on prohibited uses and follow the model bylaw by introducing specific performance standards. So of the subsections of the bylaw that are most directly amended or revised, in section 72D, district delineation, language from the model bylaw was inserted, intended to offer greater protection to the water supply by including all parcels divided by the district There was a request at the October meeting for some additional GIS analysis, geographic information system analysis. Due to limited budget on our GIS, we didn't get to that. I do provide a recommendation, if that is information the board would like to have before determining if this exact clause is relevant or necessary. I can support the Planning Board Chair in requesting local technical assistance from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Our GIS specialist doesn't expect this would take a lot of time, but he would want to spend a few hours just to clarify and be exact, to at least give a sense of how many parcels this actually impacts. Because as you know, the boundaries are extensive across the total area of the community, but also in terms of linear feet, the boundary is extensive. It circles back, it loops, there's pockets, there's a secondary section up in the northwest corner of town, which is the Thai Carmody Reservoir watershed. So there's a lot of boundary to examine.
If I can interject, I think it's even more important to see which, how parcels are impacted by it, because you may have a 30 acre tract of land that has one acre within the boundary of this land would apply to all 30 acres. I think it's one thing when you have a one acre piece of property and 40,000 square feet is in the district and you're applying the additional 3,000 square feet. That's not as big an issue as, I think it's the, so I think it's knowing which parcels and how big they are and how much is being applied to by this. So I think if they could do a free technical assistance to do that, I think it'd be worthwhile to have the chair request that.
Yeah. Yeah, the process for requesting local technical assistance is really just an email request from the Planning Board Chair directly to the Executive Director, who then reviews budgets and can allocate hours as needed. So if the chair would like, I can also follow up with draft language if that'd be helpful.
Please.
Need not be overly complicated. So moving along, section 7.2E, prohibited uses. Again, the general guidance provided by the planning board in October was to bring the existing water supply protection district bylaw into closer alignment with the Mass DEP model. So primarily that comes in the form of adding the clause relating to prohibited uses if, quote, "designed in accordance with specific performance standards." So similar language was introduced at the top of that subsection and then redirects the audience of the bylaw to section 7.2.G, which is your special permitting procedures. So where the model bylaw provided specific performance standards or references to state regulations, similar or oftentimes exact language was introduced to the relevant existing provisions. There were several insertions, so if you want to draw your attention, those provisions that were amended, 7.2.E1 regarding hazardous materials, 7.2.E3 regarding solid waste, 7.2.E4 regarding underground storage of petroleum products, 7.2.E6 regarding outdoor storage of de-icing materials, 7.2.E9 regarding earth removal, and 7.2.E13 regarding above-ground storage of petroleum products. There were two provisions in this subsection that we inserted directly from the Mass DEP model bylaw, that's 7.2.E5 regarding storage of sludge and septic, and 7.2.E11 regarding the stockpiling of snow from outside the district. So both subsections were found to already exist in the Town of Southampton's general bylaws regulations, Chapter 280, which is the groundwater protection regulations under the authority of the Board of Health. We had discussed at the October meeting that there are some instances of duplication. And given that the groundwater protection regulations are limited to Zone 2, which is not the entirety of the water supply protection district, but a majority of it, these two provisions at least were brought in exactly to expand or extend those protections across the entirety of the water supply protection district overlay. The revision of 7.2.E9 regarding earth removal within four feet of the annual high groundwater table, that was changed also to align exactly with the existing town law general bylaw, or the town general bylaw, excuse me. So the one provision that was untouched, which I welcome applause and discussion if we'd like, 7.2.E2 regarding trucking terminals, bus terminals, car washes, motor vehicle gasoline sales, and automotive service and repair shops. So I believe we understand in our conversation in October, there's, this particular provision has led kind of to this task in a past application. The model bylaw provides no language on these uses in terms of specific performance standards. Additionally, I did a brief comparison referring to neighboring communities that share the Barnes Great, the Barnes Great Brook Aquifers. So looking at East Hampton, Westfield, Southwick, their water supply protection bylaws have a very similar provision, minor differences. Southwick focuses on marine fueling. Westfield has some exception for aviation refueling. I also looked at Hadley. They include this similar provision as a prohibited use with no performance standards as references. So I think that's where there's still some opportunity to either revise the provision by teasing it apart or clarifying, I believe there may be a potential with some of these that are listed in the table of use to pull out and clarify that the, you know, as it exists in the underlying zoning, there could be a special permit process to follow. But of course, that would be at the determination of the board.
But as it's written, according to this, there'd be, these are prohibited.
Yes.
So let me get this right, so you could, you could request in certain zones, or we categorize different businesses that would be allowed, so to speak, under a special permit?
So if, if we were to take this provision, 72E2, and we broke apart, some of the, some of the uses are listed in the table of use as requiring special permit in commercial and/or industrial zones. So if you separate those, I believe any of those uses would automatically lead an applicant to follow the provisions in 72G1A, commercial and industrial uses which are allowed in the underlying district. So if you were to tease those apart, I would think that an applicant would just automatically follow the special permit process without specific guidelines or performance standards.
You were going to interject something. Hadley had same provision as this prohibiting, what do you, gasoline sales in the water supply?
To my recollection.
They don't?
I don't have it in front of me, but it was again, a quick reference. I could clarify, but I'm fairly sure they had some prohibition.
Because my recollection is they went to the model language on, on storage of petroleum products that has the performance standard, says it can be above ground with...
Right, yeah.
Um, spill containment? Yeah.
Yeah, the 110% or whatever.
Right.
I'd have to, again, I'd have to go back, it's...
This, this was gotten started, all of this, a couple of years ago, this very same issue.
Right.
And I know Holliuk has something like this, but they have some allow, that they've got some contradictions in the standard ordinance.
Right.
If you want to allow any of this, if this stays in here as prohibited, is prohibited.
Right.
What you'd have to do is take it out of here and put it in under the special permit provision, if you want to allow it, the special permit, and make it clear that to get the special permit, you have to have the performance standards met. Otherwise, you don't necessarily have to have the performance standards met.
I thought one of the biggest questions regarding that, mother, one that was disallowed when they tried to change the zoning was, there was, there was a question about whether it was Zone 1, 2, or 3, the water supply, if it was going to make a difference, which zone it was in, so you knew which one you might be allowed versus one you wouldn't. There's no, there's no zoning districts in Southampton?
Now, you just go by the water supply protection district as a whole. You can create regulations for Zone 1, separate from Zone 2, separate from Zone 3, recognizing Mass DEP does not map nor regulate Zone 3.
Right.
Which is going to be one of my other questions I got to later on, about whether Zone 3 is included here, because I'm not sure you get the information from. So I would suggest this is something we need to look a little bit further, but how we want to address this. And I recognize that DLTA has finished, it's going to be on that, but we need, we would need to take a look at this before we take the town meeting, for sure.
Would you, what are your comments, Dan or Mark? I mean, all those types of businesses as, as it is, are going to be prohibited.
Yeah, so I think, mind if I go first? Sorry, sorry, you're starting to talk. I think that we want to, we have a number of these businesses already in these, in the water supply protection district. So what we want to do is make sure that they're applying the right compliance standards, like for storage of fuel, petroleum products, for, so that they can continue to use, operate the way they are, but be in compliance to these, these rules. So we're protecting our water, but still allowing these operations to occur.
Well, just to follow the question, are they not grandfathered if they're functioning prior to the change in regulation?
Yeah, it's not going to affect grandfathered businesses, right?
The existing ones are allowed to continue.
Okay.
That's, they may have to get a, either finding from the Board of Appeals or a special permit from the planning board to make any alterations or expansion.
But I also think like, if we go back to the trigger event for all this, we want to try to allow that type of business, but in a safe manner, right? Which I think is what we can do by crafting this the right way.
Well, I agree, I think, check and find a word, I think I brought this up last time, it just says prohibited transmission of petroleum products, and it's to be the previous gas station review and have the gas from the tank pumped on the driveway to the pumps.
Right.
And so, I mean, it's a tiny thing, but I'd rather solve that now than during a hearing process.
Well, what Hadley has prohibited is petroleum, fuel, oils, and heating oil bulk stations in term... and terminals. Above ground, then there's some storage of liquid hazardous materials unless, and then that goes into the Mass D E P model standards. Same as storage of liquid petroleum products in excess of 15 gallons, so unless, above ground level and on an impervious surface, and either in a container, you can follow Mass D E P standards. So, that, that's how Hadley treats it, I was just wondering, because I remember reading So, they don't actually prohibit those, they, they have, they're prohibited unless you meet these standards.
I mean, it was quite, it was quite noticeable when, you know, the object up there on College Highway came before us. I mean, there was pretty much some vehement opposition to it, even though a guy said that you could, you could drive a tank through the, the tank, and it wouldn't damage it. I mean, and they, they had, they had their professionals here with all the, you know, technical information, but it still didn't, it still didn't fly with some people. So, I, I don't know, I, it's a sensitive issue, I suppose, but it's just, it's holding back some, some commerce. I mean, I don't, I don't envision us having trucking terminals or bus terminals around here. But, you know, a car wash, a gas station, or in another service repair shop, you know, you're holding back some growth in that regard when it comes to business, but.
And this is something the board may want to consider. As, as I, if you want to consider, or you probably want to look at, is, yeah, prohibiting the truck terminal, stuff like that, but then put, as far as taking out the gasoline sales and car wash out of prohibition, and then go by, go into the special permit section and put the petroleum storage and sales-
Yeah.
-as a special permit, provided it meets these performance standards, which are in the model bylaw.
That's the way I would suggest, but again, getting back to the, the zones, if there's, if there's less fear of some sort of great damage to the aquifer, if it was in Zone 2 versus Zone 1, or Zone 3, that, that would be helpful, because it would guide you a little bit better, knowing that, you know, they would be, if it was in Zone 1, which I'm sure is the, the most protective, correct?
And that's what's actually be owned or controlled by the water supply.
Right, you would say absolutely not, but you would want to maybe give them a provision to be available to operate in Zone 2 or 3, if, if it was on the books, but there's, there's no zones delineated in here at all, or on the map, is there?
Just Zone 2.
Just Zone 2.
Zone 2. The delineation of the overlay district aligns with Zone 2, with the addition of the watershed for the reservoir, the Tai Karmady Reservoir.
So, we don't have a 1 or a 3.
One is basically four and four-
What was that? Around the well.
Around the well, depending on size of the well. It could be less than-
Yeah, withdrawal rate determines the size of the zone. Again, like you said, that has to be under total control of the Water Supply District anyway.
And, and I know D P is allowed in some communities, some water supply entities to do that through easement, and some have it through ownership-
Yes.
Ownership being the ideal.
We have, we have ownership, if you look at that property of where our well is on the map, you'll see this like carve in a circle around, on the property boundary, so.
It's usually around 400-foot radius.
Yeah, unless it's a small well.
Excuse me, the rest of the board, but I would, I would certainly like to separate a few of those businesses out, car washes and-
Yeah.
-gas sales and repair shops over terminals.
Yeah, absolutely, that's the point I, I get too, is we have those businesses in those districts now anyways. I'd rather new ones come in that are in compliance with these regulations, such that they are protecting our water supply in a better manner.
And to be quite honest with you, remember, I don't think you were on the board then, but a few years back, Cumberland Farms had did some inquiries about expanding and renovating their store there, like they did with several of their others, and they didn't go forward with it, and I'm sure it had something to do with the existing bylaw.
Yeah, so I'd rather have, I would, my opinion is I'd rather, would have had them update their store and put the tanks in a safer place-
Exactly.
...than they are now, so, better out, better for the town.
Okay, let's, we're going to flag that one then. Go ahead, keep going, Kyle.
So, Section 72G relating to special permit uses. Two provisions were revised following the October meeting. First, 7.2G1C pertaining to impervious cover, was adjusted from the existing 20% threshold to 15%. That aligns with the model bylaw and provides greater protection to the water supply. Additionally, there is language from the model bylaw included in that subsection that relates to a system of artificial recharge that would not result in degradation of groundwater quality. So, there is a provision there with some general guidance on performance standards. I believe this clause also shows up in Chapter 280, the Groundwater Protection Regulations from the Board of Health. The other addition to this subsection, 7.2G2E, which now requires that the provided site plan include proposed down gradient locations for groundwater monitoring wells. That was a topic of conversation at our October meeting, and I, following review of that conversation, I repositioned it as a standard requirement for all site plans proposing those well locations, which the board has the authority to determine if those wells are necessary. That pretty much covers the revisions, amendments to the bylaw. Additional work relating to the, oh, yeah.
Okay. I'm going back here looking at this. E is prohibited uses.
Yes.
Prohibited uses include the following: underground storage, outdoor storage, dumping. And then, Item 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, were taken as, they were restricted uses, and now they're prohibited uses. I think those, I think, I just, I think what we need to do is if we're going to leave them as prohibited uses, we would need to go and put underground storage tanks unless, for 13, underground storage tanks for oil, gas, petroleum products, unless placed in the building on this. So, I think we need to, when we change these from restricted to prohibited, there needs to be a changing in the verbiage, where it reads as prohibited unless. So, we need to make, we need to flag those for revision as well. I was looking at the use table, and I understand how difficult it is to translate the Water Supply Protection District into the use table. I've wrestled with that for several decades in South Hadley, and I've never been satisfied with it. In the use table, anything identified as, with a P, is permitted. In the 7.2, there is no section of permitted uses. So, we'll need to incorporate something to reconcile that difference. Even as to the extent that permitted uses, or those uses identified in Table 1, as permitted by right in the Water Supply Protection District. That type of language would address that. And the nature of this is that, for instance, in the use table, where it's blank under Water Supply Protection District, that is to interpret it as prohibited. Because in a use table like this, if it's not indicated as being permitted in some fashion, it's prohibited. That's the standard interpretation of a use table. And you note in the key on the use table, it has a dash, not permitted.
Yeah.
The dash, same as a blank.
Oh, there's a lot, there's a lot of prohibited uses then in this table.
Yeah, and so, we need to do some reconciliation of that.
Which is unreasonable.
And then the problem we have is taking a Water Supply Protection District, which is an overlay, and a lot of the uses are, have caveats of performance standards, and translating that into a tabular form gets a little tricky. And so, we'll need to spend some time addressing those to make sure that it's clear that they are permitted. Because, for instance, no, agriculture uses are fine, as long as you have the performance standards.
I mean, could you have just a simple statement, all uses permitted within the underlying districts, I mean, all uses within the underlying districts are permitted unless prohibited under Section-
It even works on, nice, simple language to address that.
Even solar's not allowed. Even chickens aren't allowed.
There's some people don't think it should be, but yeah, that's, that's not the question. But we'll have to reconcile that.
Yeah, a lot of those got to be-
And that's not a big, big issue, do they? It's just-
No, it's just-
As I said, with the Water Supply Protection District, it becomes more tricky than does any other district because of the nature of Water Supply Protection.
Yeah, so, the, the attached table of use is, was a draft, and is, as noted, is incomplete, so.
I think they did a great job trying to incorporate into it, it's just a real challenge of trying to do that. It's just, because if you look at the language in Water Supply Protection District 7.2, it doesn't directly correlate to the uses listed, and that, so, you really have, have a challenge. And most often, the use is permitted if they meet certain performance standard, which can be referenced in there, that's.
So, just a quick note on the town zoning map. While that has been provided, a digital format has been provided, again, that shows the Zone 2 delineation determined by Mass D E P and the watershed of the Tai Karmady Reservoir, as described in earlier sections of the zoning, or the Water Supply Protection District bylaw. This map would require approval at town meeting to become official and adopted, so that the town clerk could record it. There are some recommended next steps. As mentioned, it's always important to rectify any discrepancies or inconsistencies that come up in various sections of the zoning bylaw. So, a more thorough kind of cross comparison internally within the zoning bylaw with permitted uses, but also sections and provisions related to soil, loam, sand, gravel quarry, and other earth materials, commercial activities, and of course, aligning the Water Supply Protection District bylaw with Chapter 280, our general recommendations moving forward. I do point out that following the October 2nd meeting, I went back through Chapter 280 briefly, to try to get a sense of the extent of that general bylaw, the way that it is written, the regulations and prohibitions outlined there apply to Zone 2 strictly, but apply, quote, notwithstanding other sections of the bylaw. So, the groundwater protection regulations would supersede zoning, is my understanding of how that general bylaw is written. So, just a stronger case for trying to align with what the Board of Health is attempting to achieve in their regulations. And then, of course, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, we are not legal experts, so we always recommend that Town Council has a review of any bylaw amendments. And that summarizes the bulk of the work. I'm happy to discuss any of these items, or take a moment just to quickly summarize the secondary memo which relates to the work related, with communities of the former Bay PAC, Barnes Aquifer Protection Advisory Council. So, a secondary element of the D L T A project was to convene a roundtable to bring representatives of East Hampton, West Hampton, Westfield, Southampton to the table to discuss the shared resource, which is the Barnes Great, Great Brook Aquifer. For this work, Town Administrator Scott-
Zebak.
Zebak, there we go. And Water Superintendent Brett Simmons were instrumental, hosting and coordinating conversations. Personnel from the public water suppliers or water departments from East Hampton, Southampton, West Springfield, and Southwick- West Springfield, and Southwick attended conversations, a roundtable conversation to discuss what they experience. So key findings, participating water departments and their staff value or appreciate cross-jurisdictional collaboration, given that zone twos for their respective drinking water supplies extend beyond the municipal boundaries. There's a shared concern amongst municipal water department staff about adequate protection of supply. At an in-person meeting on the 13th of November, water department staff across the communities very excited to collaborate, offering expertise and guidance and making themselves more available So there was an invitation to join the conversation offered to Westfield. The mayor responded in an email that raised some past historic issues with Barnes Aquifer Protection Advisory Committee, which the group Bay PAC did work under a 25-year memorandum of agreement before it expired. So there was, Westfield opted out of the conversation at the time. So at this time, the water department personnel didn't see a value of reconstituting Aquifer Protection Advisory Group, given that Westfield was absent and there didn't seem to be shared interest from all municipal executives. There was continued discussion on challenges and ways to address the challenges that are provided with appendices in the memo that was distributed. And then there was a final survey to help prioritize those challenges and hopefully direct future action. I'm happy to continue to get through all this if you'd like, to read it in the record, but the planning board chair has it and everyone has access to the memo and attachments.
I would just note when we talk about departments being informed about development occurring in proximity to a well, whenever a special permit or definitive subdivision plan is filed, the planning board gives notice to all the joining planning boards of that public hearing. And I think it'd be incumbent for a community to internally create a system whereby that planning board then distributes copies of that notice to departments within their community that might be impacted by it. And instead of imposing another burden on the applicants to give additional notice to people, I think the community can create their own internal system.
That's fair.
And notice of not being sardinated.
Well, a perfect example of that kind of communication was that battery energy storage system in Westfield. You know, that, that thing grew like wildfire when the word got around and everybody, everybody in this community responded and several others on top of it. So the word, the word got out and then, once it did, it devolves upon people to take notice. Okay, is that it, Kyle?
Nothing more to report at this time.
All right, well, you did a lot of work there.
Thank you. Hope it is helpful.
So we have got to just clear up some of the language.
We need to sit down, go through it at a session and do some tweaking before you then hold a public hearing and take it to town meeting.
Yep.
Very good.
Mr. Chair, I will follow up next week with an email for local technical assistance if you're interested for the GIS analysis.
Yeah, please.
Everyone's there.
Excuse me. Send me some information on what I've got to request or how I should go about it.
Yes, I'll, thank you all. Have a nice evening.
Thank you, Kyle. Richard, you have solar discussion draft amendments for us.
I don't think I can go through every word of it, but.
No, but I mean, you've got the highlights. I mean, go ahead.
Basically, what I've tried to do is make small systems easier for permitting and make dual-use systems that are agricultural supportive easier for permitting and accessory systems easier for permitting and make only the quote-unquote "large" commercial that don't involve agriculture the ones that had the most difficulty. That's, that's the summary of what the objective here is. To do that, I notice there's a lot of definitions that would not end the existing zoning bylaw. So I think we need to be clear as to what we're defining. I try to get, stay within the permitted use, non-permitted use framework to the extent possible of existing zoning bylaw. So we then incorporate these new terms into the use table. And medium solar, for instance, state that they are permitted by special permit by the planning board in R and R N zoning districts. I think that should be changed to site plan review. If I don't make that change, I'll get input from you. Similarly, they're permitted by site plan review in CH and IP zoning districts. I think there should be a minor site plan review, which would not require a public hearing, just a public meeting, but again, it's in the commercial highway industrial districts.
So just before you go any further, most of the ones I was reading from different communities along the way, they, they went from small to large. There was nothing in between. And so you have a feeling that there's some medium that should have a look?
Trying to massage your existing into this. You actually have four different categories and they go from like a 16 to a 250, 250 to 500. So I'm trying to fit in with that system and going with small being up to 100, medium being 100 to 250, large being over 250. So it fits into the existing framework without totally tearing it apart. My personal opinion, I think, I'm not sure 250 is a proper lower threshold for large. I tend to think 500 or even 1,000 might be more appropriate, given today's technology and what's happening. But it is common for large to be at the 250 threshold.
250 and up.
And there are some also have a standard that basically, if you have more than 2,000 square feet of solar panels, that's beyond the small residential type operation. That comes more of a commercial. And so that's why you've got the 2,000. And basically, they use different numbers. I looked at what, looked at the plans for one of the recent projects and looked at what their dimensions were and 2,000's above what the residential was, but it, it fits in a reasonable threshold there that. Then large, but not including accessory. And accessory are, if you've got a commercial or industrial or whatever building or municipal building and it's accessory to that use, it's not, and it's, it's sized so that it's primarily used for consumption on that property. Then you limit 200% of the projected consumption. That's accessory use. That's, if it's more than that, it's probably primarily a commercial operation and they go through the large review process.
When you do these over again, your definitions or whatever, try to put in bold with small scale, you're bold print what the KW is, just so it sticks out a little bit. Small, medium, large.
Bold.
Yeah.
Small, medium, and large. So we build the existing 7.6 and go with this new one. And I'm gonna cheat sheet over here while I change things. That's way too complicated to distribute.
Yeah, but, yeah, because you didn't, you didn't highlight throughout all of it what your changes were. I mean, a lot of the other stuff, as I, we were finding out going through some of these small scale, which were categorized as medium scale in our existing bylaw, it just, it had so much regs tied to them that were more for commercial.
So purpose stays the same. B applicability stays the same. C, general requirements stay the same. D, maintenance stays the same. E is replaced. E had, the existing E dealt with action on site plan applications and had about almost a page on that. Replacing that with where site plan review is required for so generating facility, process and decision, et cetera, are in accordance with Article 9 and your planning board rules and regulations. That makes it simple. Existing F is fee. That's part of the rules and regulations. It doesn't even be in here. And that's addressed in section nine already. And so insert new section F. Solar generating facilities allowed by right. Small, always by right. Accessory, if it's less than 250 kilowatt hour, kilowatt, and dual use, if it's less than 250 kilowatt. By right, the process is, they apply for building permit, building commission refers to the planning board for review term that meets the zone by law.
Similar to an A and R.
Right.
If it meets the criteria, they.
Like any other building permit that comes before you. Front yard, side yard, based what the small are right now. Screening, they have to screen, they can apply for waivers if they want to, they want to ask for waiver, do that before you apply for building permit. Then put them over parking areas, but may not diminish the number of parking spaces below the minimum, for instance, and then they may not alter the stormwater.
That wasn't in the previous one, was it?
No.
Parking.
That's new. And the reason this is in there is when we're doing the solar bylaw in South Hadley, one of the planning board members said, we had an interesting thing at UMass. They put over parking area. It's not gonna change the quantity of water, but it may change the direction, the time, the flow and therefore constantly, so it could change your stormwater system.
Yeah.
Because the nature of, you're changing the shape, you're changing the rate of runoff. So we make sure that we're gonna be sure that's addressed if they're gonna do that. And then it's got the same position, provision you have right now for abandonment for small systems. Then we're gonna insert a G. The existing bylaw has, the existing bylaw has a lot of, it has requirements for medium and large and what this is trying to do is say, what size it is, if it requires site plan view or special permit, these are the requirements that apply. Go and look at those. And the dimensions are taken from the existing medium and large solar systems. Same with permanent structures, you have the over parking area provision in here as well, and again, they may ask for waiver. And then the abandonment, decommissioning is from the existing for most part.
We have on there, the height of solar panels associated support shall not exceed 15 feet. I'm thinking about the orchard one, which it approved was agricultural. I mean, they had to have it high enough that they grow trees underneath and get farming equipment under it.
Right.
So the lower edge of the panel had to be at least that high, so I'm sure the upper end was higher than.
That'd be a perfect case for asking for waiver when they come in for site plan Or if it's gonna be a small, small one, for the apply for building permit, ask for waiver on that because, hey, we got a tractor that's 18 feet high and need a higher one. Then I've incorporated in here design and performance standards as well. A lot of these I took from the existing. Again, trying to consolidate them into one area. And I lost some from some other bylaws I've seen that have some really good provisions as well that address things that hadn't been addressed here. Now we've got lighting standards signage, basically comply with the signed bylaw. Utility connections, reasonable efforts to be made, place them underground. Access, minimize grading and remove the stone walls or trees, minimize impacts. Vegetation management, hazardous materials, identify they're gonna be on there and comply with Mass DEP regulations. Impacting agricultural and environmentally sensitive land, minimize those impacts. Again, you've got not more than 50% of the total land area proposed, but the solar may be occupied by the solar panels with the remainder remaining as undeveloped open space left in its natural state. Concentrate solar panels or spread and part, however you wanna do it, but trying to maintain. I think the Blue Wave did a really good job and that should be kind of the model that we will encourage people to do. Drainage, if you've gotta get permit from stormwater, then that'd be part of the process. Should run concurrent and do some screening. Safety environmental standards are taken from the existing, as I recall. And then have a separate, new H for those just requiring site plan approval, specifically site plan approval. And then states, rich ones are, I'd do that. And your existing one included a lot of detail on what had been submitted and for most part, I took a lot of that out. I took a lot of that out because that's part of your site plan review application. There are some specific items that are specific to solar that makes sense to have in here that you could take out of here and have another separate section of your rules and regulations, processes, processes rather, that identify those.
Yeah, a minor thing here, you have the TAF show that not more than 20% of the trees on the site were removed unless there's a plan to replace. I've gotten into this issue before, is a tree of 1-inch diameter sampling or is a tree anything over 40?
What page are you looking at?
What's the page number?
Page 11.
11. Trees.
What are you on, what number?
On H, on page 11. H1.
At the top, the bullet is up to the top. Not more than 20% of the trees would be removed unless there's a plan to replace. You're right.
I've gone through this before, of different project submissions.
Size of trees.
Yeah, and 20 cent over, 5-inch caliper or whatever you want to do, but you'll have somebody say there was a sampling or took that.
X-inch caliper, yeah. Okay. So we'll clarify that.
Thank you.
Actually, I probably do is use 10-inch because I use 10-inch later on, so.
What's that?
Use 10-inch caliper.
That's a pretty good sized tree.
Well, that is, you want significant trees. Now, I can, I've seen projects where you basically go out there and survey each and every tree and that's not what you're trying to get at. You're trying to get the big ones that have the canopy. And I'm looking at a project in another community and they wanted to park and they X-ed out must have been 40 trees. My guess, those trees are not all 8-inch caliber trees, they're probably 2-inch. And that's a little bit much.
I missed something when I was out, so we're on trees?
We're on page 11 of the...
All right. Maybe, maybe it's upcoming with land clearing because I know some committees are, communities were very concerned about the big large scale coming in solar fields and how much, how much and where they were taking, taking down trees, vegetation and stuff.
Yeah, and that's, that's what this relates to, that napkins requesting is medium and can be approved on minor site plan review only if they're not requesting waivers, their demonstration electricity being generated is primary for on-site, or they're not removing more than 20% of the large trees.
And then there's a provision here I see in nine, or B2, no more than 50% of the land utilized shall be forested.
What page are you on?
10. I'm just backing up a bit there because I missed that. So nine, 9B2. No more than 50% of the land partalized, utilized for solar electric generating, so they shall be forested. That's in line with what some other communities doing.
There should be no more or no less than?
Probably should be no less than. Yeah, I think I got the wrong word.
More than 20, it's got no less than.
No, less than 50% of land.
Or say no more than 50% shall be cleared.
Yeah. It's trying to be more positive about that.
Yeah.
Leave forested, not, yeah. And that's prior to what it was, number one, and I changed it from clearing to forested.
So you're still on page 11?
Yes, and again, procedures, I just go back to your, Section 9 is earned by law A lot, now, I wrestle with some of the requirements in here, specifying the requirements of application.
What documents?
Yes. Those contact information, that may be more important in a solar than it is in a typical project. So I left that in here. Estimated earthwork, I think that's essential in a solar that may not be necessary in most other projects. So I include some things in here that I wrestle with, but I, and Q3 engineer, sound is more, that comes up every time. I don't care what community you're in, they bring it up and they didn't remember, they're in here, it's every place to do.
Right.
And then I've got another section on specific items related to special permit but not site plan. And then accessory, they've conformed to the previous, not... The interesting thing about accessory that I want to be sure got addressed is, let's say you've got commercial buildings already been built, but there are special conditions attached to that. Want to be sure when they come in for a solar facility that's accessory, that doesn't alter or doesn't conflict with those conditions.
Battery storage is a separate...
That I'm going to be developing separately.
Separate amendment?
Yes. I actually think this needs to go through first before we... Why I'm going to do battery storage is, that's going to be another section of 7.6. Because battery energy storage systems tend to create more controversy at town meeting than the solar bylaw does.
Didn't westfield.
And you can't have a bylaw that prohibits them.
Right, yeah.
Communities have tried to do that and it turned general office says, rejected them. They're given the same exemption as solar under check 48, Section 3.
Very good.
So I'd like to, now, we've gone through, I've gone very briefly, but if there's specific items in here, let me know. Now, take some time and read through it and mark it up and either email me the information or we can discuss it next, another meeting, but try to get, I want to try to get this finalized so you can then advertise it for, and hopefully have it cleaned up before you advertise with public hearing.
Well, let's put it this way, if he doesn't hear from anyone...
It's okay.
That'll be a, and we'll look this over, what, maybe another week?
Yeah.
Look it over and if you have any concerns...
You have time and time.
Shoot an email to him.
Yeah, so let's say...
Me through him.
By next Wednesday, by next Wednesday, shoot me your concerns.
Okay. Fair enough. Now, an email I sent you, just jog my memory, we did ADUs back in like August or September, right?
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Did that go, did we have a hearing on that or was that just the draft bylaw? Do you remember?
I thought it...
I know we did the ADU bylaw that Richard drafted. Did I have a hearing on that? I can go back and look, but I can't, I can't remember if we had a hearing on that. Something tells me we did.
I think you did.
But we didn't have one on your special permit and site plan.
No. But even if you did, if it's more than six months before town meeting meets, you need to do another one.
What's that?
Public hearing.
The ADU?
If you did, if town meeting meets May 14th, the public hearing held by the plan board has to be within six months of that.
Well, that's way beyond that.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the change in law from the state on accessory drilling units? I saw in the paper.
What?
What's the change in the law from the state on accessory drilling units? I saw in the paper.
That's what we, that's what we addressed.
Okay, so we're just approving.
We're in compliance with that, right.
Okay, cool.
In fact, the building inspector emailed me last week and Richard confirmed it, but he had somebody inquiring about that. But yet, our, our bylaw isn't set yet. We've got it in draft form, but it has been accepted at town meeting. But Richard says regardless, the mass law is, is in effect, regardless of ours has been passed or not. So if someone could come before us with one and we'd have to...
Well, actually, they wouldn't have come before you.
There you go. By right.
All they had to do is apply for building permit.
Building permit, right.
And what I advise Paul...
But you had some exceptions though, where they would have to come to us for. Three different, I thought you had three different categories where they would have to...
Well, the only time they had to come to you is if they're not in compliance with state law. But what you'd have to do, what the building commission have to do is take the existing zoning by law and eliminate those items that are not complying with state law. For instance, you have a requirement for on occupancy. He couldn't apply that. You have a 6-on-square-foot limitation, I think. He couldn't apply that. So anything that is not consistent with state law, and I laid out for Paul what I think those are, he'd have to set those aside and basically treat it like any other building That's, I know some communities have enacted, Hadley for instance, enacted a, enacted the bylaw last fall to address the new ADU law, state law. Lundenberg was going to and then they had the issue and they, they started to put off till May, but the longer you put off, more likely, likely is somebody's will apply for building permit. Because developers will find out this is the way they can build a house and have ADU back there and have rental income.
That's the end of that and I, the only other item I have, I didn't have any warrants until Richard sent me his bill. In between the time I made the agenda, but we want to pay him for December and January. $2160, 24 hours at his rate plus mileage. So I'm asking for a motion to approve Richard's December and January consulting fee.
Move that we approve Richard's invoices for January and December, December, January? Yes.
$2,160.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any other reports of committees or any information you need to know?
One thing that I wanted to mention, it's last time we had the select board meeting and we were, one of the things Chris Falls brought up was their, I think they're called the bylaws committee, but they were doing a bylaw on swimming pools. So swimming pools, updating the, our swimming pool bylaw. So just, because we were talking about bylaw sites, that came to my mind, so just wanted to mention.
She also said that you're working on, or going to work on scenic, scenic road, right?
Yeah. Yeah, we straightened that one out for sure.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Richard.